Hey, welcome everyone to the February 4th Planning Board meeting. Tonight, we are going to be talking about the ADU, accessory dwelling unit component of the Affordable Homes Act, which is now law as of this week. So Stockbridge and other towns across Massachusetts are scrambling to update their zoning bylaws to meet the requirements. And the state has issued the regulations that Jennifer circulated. Those are stamped the unofficial copy of the final code of mass regulations. So it will probably, there could be some changes, but it's likely they wouldn't be minor, but you never know. So that's what we're working with tonight. I spoke with Donna Brewer, our town council, and assuming this is what we are going to be working with when we update our zoning bylaws. There's a few questions that I'd like to talk about tonight for us to just start the conversation on. If we can come to an agreement tonight, that's great. But we don't have to because I'm just introducing this now. Okay, so I'm gonna just quickly list the three questions that I'd like for us to talk about tonight. And then we'll start with the first. So the three questions are, one, the idea that accessory dwelling units can or cannot be used as short-term rentals. The second is allowing one or two accessory dwelling units per parcel. And the third has to do with what Donna refers to as condoized properties. So that's a property that's, I assume, is a condo or is becoming a condo. And would that property be eligible for one ADU? Or would it be eligible for one ADU per condo? So those are the three questions that I want to talk about tonight. And let's start with the first, which is the idea of accessory dwelling units. And should they, or should they not be allowed to be used as short-term rentals? So I'd like to, my recommendation is to let the board have this conversation amongst themselves. And then we've got in the audience, I think Marie Raftery is on Zoom. Hi, Marie. And Patrick White from the Select Board is in the audience. Okay, so but I'd like to just start with the board and see what your thoughts are. Yeah.
I think the first thing to consider is what the intent of the Massachusetts ADU laws are trying to address. And I guess anybody can comment on that. But I think what they're trying to address is a shortage of housing.
Yes.
A shortage of housing for basically residents or people who are coming to the area to live in. They're not, these laws aren't being put in place to support Airbnbs. That's my basic take on it. And with an understanding of the intent, I think the question about short-term rentals becomes pretty cut and dry. That's my take, actually.
Can you read what your paper says on the other side about what is an ADU?
What is an ADU?
Yeah.
An accessory dwelling unit is a small residential living space located on the same lot as another home. ADUs can play a significant role in our housing crisis. The ADU policy recently signed by the governor allows property owners to build an ADU without having to get special or discretionary approval from the local zoning board. ADUs can be internal within an existing primary residence, like converting basement into an apartment, attached to a primary residence as a new construction addition, or completely detached, like a cottage or converted detached garage in the background. The Affordable Homes Act amends the definition of accessory dwelling unit under Section 1A of Chapter 40A. The general law is to clarify that the maximum size of an ADU is no more than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. The definition was also amended to prohibit homeowner occupancy requirements and unreasonably restricting the creation or rental of an ADU.
Thank you, Liz. Nancy, also, if you look at that sheet that Jennifer just printed out for you, and that you also have that in your email. If you look at 71.02 under definitions, you'll see a definition for accessory dwelling unit, and that is on the second page. Okay. So I think really the question, though, is you don't really have to be thinking about the details of the definition and ADUs right now. It's just a question of whether you think they should be used or not used as short-term rental. And I think I'm going to, I'll just go and then I'll be done. I would agree with Eric's assessment of the intent of the law. I'm not interested in providing housing for outside investors. And I'm really interested in addressing the actual need here as best we can. And so I would, my vote on this one would be for no short-term rentals.
The definition that was just read and the one that's in the unofficial copy here is a definition of the physical structure, of what the physical structure can be. And obviously, it's not a definition of what the intent of the law is.
Right. Liz, do you have any thoughts?
No, not at the second. I'm just, it's their wording that makes me a little nervous. As I say, it's subject to additional restrictions that may be imposed by a municipality, including but not limited to additional size restrictions and restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental as defined in Section 1, Chapter 64. Provided, however, that no municipality shall unreasonably restrict the creation or rental of an ADU that is not a short-term rental. I think that last bit is open for interpretation.
And unreasonable is such a vague, I mean, that leaves it open to which is a little frustrating.
Who decides?
The wording is addressing that is, you know, a situation that is not a short-term rental. Okay, that's sort of the key there, not a short-term rental.
I mean, the stated purpose is right there. I mean, it's the very first thing. I'd have to agree that probably not appropriate or not what was thought of in this instance. Now, we have the ability to make that stipulation. Is that part of what we can do?
The reason we're having this discussion is because, let me back up a little bit. I probably should have provided this context when I started, but I didn't remember, is that the good news is that Donna is going to work on updating our zoning bylaws. So, and she needs the board input on these three points before she starts. Okay, so sorry, I forgot to mention that. But that is the context, is that once she has this input from me, she can start working on updating the zoning bylaws. You know, and we're gonna need, right now, the zoning bylaws, there's a definition for accessory structures.
Yeah.
But we'll need to have incorporated the.
Are you required to state the purpose of your garage and your property that may house an ADU or a short-term rental? Is that something that's still gonna be allowed to happen? Or does that restrict your ability to do a short-term rental within the structure that may be an ADU? Are you simply not going to be able to short-term rent it if you have this size structure and this accommodation with sanitation, kitchen, and bedroom? Does it restrict your ability to do that at all with that structure?
It's a decision of the town. It's a decision of the planning board. The Select Board will have a whack at this, too.
Right, but I'm saying if we adopt, you cannot short-term rent a given property with these dimensions and that they meet these. So is that all of them? Or are you allowed to choose, okay, no, I want to be able to short-term rent it, or I want it to be an ADU? Can you make that designation as a property owner? Or will it blanket all? You follow me?
If you're, I do. If you're applying for an ADU, then you're applying under the parameters of the bylaw. And if the boards decide and the town votes for it, this would have to go on the town warrant. And I do recommend that we arrive at decisions on these so that we can move quickly and get this to town meeting. Okay, we are on a tight timeline here, and I do recommend that we move on it. You know, so if town meeting approves the idea of no short-term rentals, then yeah, if you're applying for, to build an ADU, if Liz wants to put an ADU on her property.
I have one now that qualifies.
As an ADU?
Why am I no longer have the ability to short-term rent it if we adopt?
No policy.
Yeah, so it takes that out of the equation, or?
It's not grandfathered in, is what you're asking.
That's right. That's my.
It covers all, including the existing.
I can double-check on that, Wayne. I can double-check, but my understanding is that it's not grandfathered in. But I will double-check with town council on that.
So it has to be one or the other. You can't, like, if you put in an ADU and then no one rents it, and it sits there, you put all this money into it and it sits there, can you change the designation to a short-term rental?
You wouldn't be able to. Yeah, but you could live in the ADU and rent on your house. Lose the ability in some way. I mean, so who would? Well, who can do a short-term rental then? Is that only out of your?
Main house.
Your home, your main house.
So you moved to the.
Yeah, you could, so you could live in the ADU.
That's right.
And then do the short-term rental in your house.
The whole house.
But you wouldn't, okay, you wouldn't have the ability in the other. No, I don't think so. I mean, I don't.
Not if we chose that direction.
Right, but that's a good question for, unless they already have that answer in there, which I didn't say so. I didn't see it in there either. I just, I can see where it doesn't work one way.
Yep.
And I'm not so sure if it can work the other way.
If someone has, has happened both on the corporate level and on the residential level, if somebody buys a parcel and there's a house on it, or they build a house on it, they could short-term rent that because there isn't any ADU.
Right, so let me see, I'm just gonna read you the section. This is under 71.03. C. Short-term rentals municipalities may establish restrictions and prohibitions on the short-term rental of protected use ADUs pursuant to MTL. C64G. And then there's, it goes on to.
Oh, shall.
I'm sorry?
It says shall not, right?
No, municipalities may establish restrictions and prohibitions on the short-term rental of protected use ADUs.
Six, seven, page, what about number 71.03?
It says shall not.
103.
103, yeah.
Where are we? 71.03.
Yeah, what number?
C, under C. So if you go to, so you go under C. If you go to three, four. Seven, page seven.
It's a little confusing, yeah, so it's the bottom of the page.
Yeah.
So you've got a different one, too.
So you have numbers and letters and numbers and letters.
I know.
Come down to C.
Yeah, so it's under Section 3.
Okay.
Which has A, B, and C.
Second to the last page.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
They don't have page numbers.
That would be helpful.
It's the last page.
Okay.
See.
Right, so it seems to me like, Nancy, do you have any, Gary, do you have any? I mean, really, what Donna, the information she wants from us is sort of simple. It's, do we want these ADUs to be used as short-term rentals or not?
Well, it's not that simple. For the reason I just stated, I can't say, yeah, definitely don't want it. I get the idea, but I don't wanna blanket something and have people restricted and what they're just gonna say, no more. Here they are with their short-term rental now, and guess what? You can't do that anymore.
Okay, so I'm gonna put you down as a yes to short-term rentals?
No, don't put me down as anything yet. We've only been talking about it for five minutes. I don't want, I'm not voting on this now. I just wanna, like you said, start the discussion.
Okay.
And I have that question.
Okay, all right.
And I just wonder where that leads us because.
So your question is if there's an existing structure and someone puts in an ADU, can they use the existing, live in the ADU and use the existing structure as a short-term rental?
Well, I think that's possible now. I think that can be done. I'm wondering about the ADU being designated blank, putting a blanket over all of them in town and saying you will not short-term rent this.
Somebody's short-term renting already.
Right.
Okay.
And is the future, is it covered that way from here forward? You will not, you shall not?
I will check that, okay?
That will not and shall not, I think.
Okay, any other questions, Wayne?
At this second, no, but I'd like to hear other discussion on it.
Okay. I think you've heard from Eric. Gary, did you want to elaborate or?
No, I mean, I think that for the ADU, I would say no. But I'd also wonder if it can be the other way around, which is, you know, if you built an ADU, I think they don't want it to be a short-term rental. But could you live in the ADU and then
Okay.
have a short-term rental in your main residence? And then I would go.
So you have two residences in the main residence?
No, just one.
Okay.
Well, because, like, just for argument's sake.
Yeah.
I would build an ADU, 900 square feet.
Right.
And I would live there. And then I would rent the rest of my house.
Right.
Then I would ask, what's the difference?
It's more than 900 square feet. So anyways, it's not something that he is creating. It's, I don't, the way I'm looking at it, and there are different ways of looking at it, different opinions, of course. But this doesn't stop the ability for someone to have a short-term rental. They can buy a piece of property with a house on it. They can buy a piece of property and build a house on it. And as has happened in the both, you know, like they say, on the corporate level and on the private level in the town already, and they can rent that as a short-term rental. It's never been established as an ADU. It's not an ADU because it's not a separate building that's on someone's property. So it doesn't blanket, the way I'm looking at it, it doesn't take short-term rentals off the table.
No, but it would for these units.
Yeah.
Well, if you built one, yeah.
But, you know, think of it a different way. If you're building it and you want to use, a short-term rental is 31 days or less. If somebody was building it and said, oh, I'm gonna rent it out for the summer, that's possible. It's, it could, no, it could be two months to some, I mean, there are a lot of people who do the whole summer.
Yes.
Would that be covered or not? Because are we looking at it as, do we want it to be available to everybody all the time? Or do we want it as, well, somebody's putting this up here because they really need to make money to help them pay the bills that they have on their house now, which are exorbitant?
And was part of the original idea of that?
Right.
Or that the person that couldn't take care of their home now moved into the smaller location?
Or we're older and we don't want, we don't want steps or whatever it is. But I'm thinking more about, you know, if you're in your house and you build this thing so you can get some extra income to help pay for the expenses of, or you turn your garage into it so you're not building a whole new thing and it doesn't cost as much. But so that you can help pay the expenses. You can help pay for the exorbitant oil, you know, oil and electric and everything that's gone up so much that we can't afford.
So is that an argument for?
It's an argument for short-term rentals that are more, it wouldn't be, it's an argument for, I guess, not having short-term rentals, but what's the number? What's your question now, I'm questioning now, how many days?
Days and lots. What, I mean, but you're saying that's 31. Our definition right now is 31.
So then you don't have big turnovers in neighborhoods? I mean, that's, I think, part of it is that people are very tired of having these big turnovers. You don't know who the guys are going in and out. If you live in a condo, you cannot rent like that.
We don't know our neighbors anyway.
I know.
I mean, that's. But that's another, that's another story. But both of my neighbors now are short-term rentals.
When, if this goes through and if it is restricted as we're talking about, it's not gonna change that situation at all.
Right, just going with its one house.
Yeah, it's somebody renting their house out.
Right.
And in many cases, and I shouldn't say many cases, in a number of cases, that's why the person who owns that property bought it. Because that's what they wanted to do. The idea of somebody creating an ADU to be used as a short-term rental to help pay the bills on their main house is a, it's a worthy idea. All I'm saying, it was not the intent of the present thing that we're looking at.
Right.
Exactly.
Right, it's just the way things operate in this town. I mean, if you, we make money in the summer. That's what we do. The ski season doesn't really exist anymore. I mean, we used to rent our house out in the winter on weekends, when I was a kid. Nobody wants to come here. Or you've got, you know, a lot of places that don't cost as much. So it's a hard, this is a hard one.
And I don't think this prohibits people from renting out parts of their home as a, in B&amp;B style.
No, no, this is just about ADUs.
Right, so I mean, I knew, when I used to work for the defense plan up in Pittsfield, I knew people who, like you said, in the winter or in the summer or whenever, you know, tango season or whatever, you know, they would, they would rent out a bedroom for a weekend or a week or whatever. And that's outside of what we're talking about here.
I wonder how many ADUs have been hijacked for short-term rent? I mean, there's no stats on that at this point, is there? Because when that happens, is it documented? It's supposed to be, but is it?
Well, we don't have a good policing system.
We don't, we don't. We don't have like a directory of.
Right.
I wonder if it's being abused, you know? Is that a danger that we're, are we worrying about something that?
That we don't need to, or that we can't control.
And I'm just curious, I mean, I understand, I mean, there's, we're jamming a lot of stuff down our throat here. But I just wonder about if this is being abused, if it's an abuse, is it being used that way? Are the ADUs being short-term rented? I don't know of any, but I don't, I don't get out in town too much either. So I'm not a good one to go by.
Well, the state is putting this forward.
Right.
And we're required to react to it.
So, but this particular question is one that you had kind of thought of and wanted to discuss. Or is this something that was produced somewhere else, this particular question?
What, which question?
Whether an ADU can be short-term rented.
So as I said, I spoke with Donna because, you know, we think these are close to the final regulations. So we'd like to be proactive and address this at our town meeting ideally. And Donna can update our bylaws to match the requirements that are not negotiable. But she also needs answers to some of these questions that are.
Few that are negotiable.
Yeah. So, you know, those are the three questions that she asked me to, you know, bring up, bring before the board.
Wanted us to, she wanted to know those three answers.
She'll need those, yeah, in order to work on updating the bylaws. So we don't have to, you know, arrive at a final decision tonight, but I wanted to start the conversation. And I think.
What do we have in town, ADUs right now?
I don't know.
Do you have an idea of how many there are?
Not participating.
Well, I'm just, you're the only one, the only one that would know.
Yeah, I think they're 140.
140?
I think that's all during, all over times of the year.
Okay.
So.
A short-term rental.
As ADUs or short-term rentals?
The total number of short-term rentals.
Okay. Yeah, we don't, I don't think we have a number of ADUs. Do we have a clue?
I think the only thing you could do is like a building.
So we had when that came before the board, but I think it was last year. But we generally, generally, people are just doing it.
Yeah.
And they're not coming before the board. So, you know.
We need to walk the streets and count.
Well, I don't know if we need, all right. So I think we can move on to, unless Nancy, I haven't heard from you. Did you want to speak or do you want to wait? Do you want to think about it?
I'm still thinking about it.
Yep, that's fine.
But they can do it by right, correct?
Well, once this is passed.
Yeah, one.
As of now.
One day or whatever.
Yes.
As of now, yeah.
Right. So right now, you can short-term rent it. Yes.
Instead of calling it an ADU, they call it a short-term rental.
No, it's still an ADU.
Still an ADU, but you can do with it what you want.
It's a very short term, it's a restriction on it.
Right.
Till now. So what happens when the town, we change the bylaw? It doesn't go backward, right? It's only like going forward as of that date.
Well, it depends.
Well, that, that I don't.
We don't know.
Yeah.
That's exactly what we're.
That's the grandfather law.
Sure, it's not grandfathered in, but.
If it's not grandfathered, then when the restriction goes in, then the person who built the ADU and was short-term renting it.
Very unhappy.
Got a lot.
Would have to now long-term rent it.
All right, so, okay, so why don't I do this? I'll see if there's any comments from Marie or Patrick. Did you want us to come up and speak?
Is a concern, so.
Just come on. I have no comments. Good luck with this.
Thanks, Marie.
One, in the short-term.
Do you mind, so that your back isn't to the, thank you, I appreciate it.
Sorry, Maria, and to keep, I did not need to, you know.
They can't see him anyway.
In our short-term rental bylaw, we ban professionally managed units. What that means is that, you know, a corporation can't come in and manage two or more units in the town. All right, we have a carve-out, I won't get into why, but we have a carve-out for LLCs. But every other type of corporation is also banned from doing a short-term rental in town. Now, one of, and so it seems like if, without dealing with the question of, the legitimate question, for example, if you were to allow a short-term rental in the main house, but not the ADU, you're effectively kind of discriminating against families. Because one of, if somebody like me who's single, I could move above my garage and rent my main house. But if you have a family of five, you're not able to do that. So, you know, I think that this question, the keep it simple stupid rule for me is tighten up the LLC loophole, be more vigilant on professionally managed units, and make sure that there's only one short-term rental per property. be more vigilant on professionally managed units, and make sure that there's only one short-term rental per property. Seems like it's a pretty simple thing. That way you know, you're not getting people buying them up to do two, you know? That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
So if we already have rules in place that don't allow corporations to come in and do more than one or more than two, then that takes care of that. I mean.
I, I agree with him tightening up the LLC, because any corporation that comes in just becomes an LLC.
Right.
Anybody just becomes an LLC.
Be interesting to know the details behind why that was omitted, but, um.
But there, there is also, is, there are also, I believe, as, uh, there are as many residents in the town that are doing this, uh, as well as LLCs, let's say. So I don't think that, I don't think it's purely a outside entity problem.
No, I, I don't either. I just think.
And you probably.
I'm curious how many ADUs are being used for that. That would be, you know, is it a problem? You know, are we not?
I guess you have to look at VRBO and Airbnb and all of those things where they're going to be marketing them. Um, but they, they, as soon as you catch them, they take them off and put them back afterwards.
And this, and this.
Something, well, you can't change the, you can't change the address.
And this calls for the possible creation of a second ADU.
So that's the next question?
Yeah.
Are we ready to move along?
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All right. So why don't, if, if we, if we may, how about if we move on to the second question? And, um, I'll get some answers. I'll double check with Donna on those, those Gary's question and Wayne's question. And the next question is, um, and you can, that's very clearly, um, um, shown in these regulations, you have the option, um, to restrict um, ADUs to one ADU per parcel. So you could do, restrict it to one ADU per parcel, or you could do two ADUs with the second ADU on the parcel being by special permit. So that's, that's the next thing that Donna will need your input on. Okay? So who would like to start?
I, I guess the question would be, would it have anything to do with acreage? You know, some, somebody has one acre and somebody has fifty acres. And the same rule applies to both?
That's a good question.
Well, setback rules have to apply, right? So if you had a small parcel, you could, you know, I suppose you could fill up the lawn with tiny houses, but you would just, uh.
But it does call out the setback provisions you can't change though.
Yeah, you have to.
Setbacks hold.
Yeah, but the, yeah, just, just to add to that, the density doesn't hold though.
Right.
Right.
Because density isn't a part of it.
Or does the required lot size.
Right.
Right.
So I guess that would be two questions right there. Density and lot, and lot size.
So.
Because I could foresee where, if you had a one-acre parcel, you know, it could probably throw two tiny houses on, maybe three.
Well, we're talking about ADUs though.
But a tiny house can be an ADU.
It could be an ADU.
Okay.
They're just small. And is there, do we really have a three-hundred-foot minimum square footage? Because I'm curious about that too. There's some tiny houses.
In the existing, yeah, in the existing.
I think we should address that too.
Well, that would go away.
It would?
Yeah.
How would it go away?
Um.
Oh, because it has to be nine hundred square feet.
Yeah.
No, up to nine.
No, it doesn't, up to nine, up to nine. No, there's no, in the, in this, in the regulation, there's no minimum.
Oh.
That's, so, so we can take that out.
I mean, that's, wow, that's crazy.
So an RV?
I mean, my feeling is if somebody wants, doesn't mind living in a small vehicle, you know?
It's not a trailer.
Wait, one at a time?
Folks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. Go ahead, Nancy.
Well, I was just thinking about, gee, if they could use an RV as an ADU, because it's got electric and plumbing and hook up and everything, but it's not a trailer and it's not a tiny house.
It has wheels on it.
That's right.
Is there any requirement that an ADU?
You can make a good point. But I think there is a restrict, I think our bylaws, I, I think it has.
That's a good question.
Homes are covered and that would be considered a mobile home.
Okay.
Well, a tiny house has wheels.
Do?
They don't have to.
They don't have to, but many of them do.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's, like, is that even addressed in this?
So one thing that I, I'll just mention is that, um, well, Liz, you were at, and Nancy, you were, the three of us were at the, the public hearing hosted by, um, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Oh, I got that out.
Amazing.
And, um, there were a lot of questions. And, uh, some of these things in these regulations, a lot of unanswered questions. So it's likely that some of these unanswered questions will be, um, will be addressed through case law over time.
Did any crop up that you thought were interesting as far as were concerned from other communities?
Yes, there was concern across the state and, uh, I mean, there was, there were different, you know, as you would expect, there were housing advocates there. And then there were people who were concerned about impacts to character of their towns. Um, there were some specific questions. There were, there were some legal comments from attorneys, like the attorney for Amherst had some very specific um, concerns. And, you know, I'm not going to pretend to be a, a real estate lawyer, so my, my concerns were more, you know, broad-based. This is, you know, Massachusetts is a home rule state. Uh, this represents loss of, of local control. So, and then I felt that, um, there were some things that were not clear. I mean, I'll just go right to one of the sections, number three, unreasonable regulation. I don't feel that this is, that whole section is, is written or with consideration for a board made up of, of laypeople. I don't see how that, how that wording is, is, I mean, it's very subjective in many cases.
The home rule is a perfect example of what they're kind of ignoring here, all of this. I, I feel, I just, it's a.
Right. So it's, you know, um, I don't know how this will play out, but I think we should, uh, I, my approach probably won't surprise you, but is to, um, is to move forward in an incremental way and, you know, not knowing, I just don't know how this will play out. So that would be my approach is to do what we can to secure uh, the character of the town, because that I feel is, is very important. And to limit, um, the impact of short-term rentals. That's my position there. So, you know, I will, I mean, that's in terms of uh, your question about scope of property list, I think, you know, you're going to get down to, you just need to decide, do you want to allow, you know, one or two ADUs per parcel?
Because right now, two is, you can do two, provided.
And do two by special permit.
As of today.
Or you can restrict it to, to one per parcel. And that's going to be where I land on it, because to me, that represents an incremental approach.
And also to, to, to address your concern or argument or discussion or whatever you want to call it. Point, that's better. Relative to the one-acre property owner with a house to a fifty-acre property owner with a house. And if you, if it, if the idea is that it's unreasonable to limit a fifty-acre property owner to one ADU across his property, I think the remedy there is, okay, he's in the fifty-acre property is in our four zoning, okay? So he subdivides. And then you can build another one.
Except when you look at the rural property, I, I mean, I'm thinking one in particular. If you look at the rural properties here, if you're going to have four acres zoning and you have to put it four acres and you've got a septic and you've got all these other things, that's a very expensive ADU.
Yep.
And you're also breaking up land that maybe you wouldn't want to break up. Maybe you keep it because we want it to be open land. I mean, that, I have, I have an argument for everything, but, um, it's just a, it's just a.
Yep. I, I don't, I don't see, and the, this is, you can, we can come up with all different kinds of scenarios, I'm sure, but. So if you have the fifty-acre property and he wants to add a second ADU, he can divide it into two twenty-five-acre properties or one four-acre property and one, what's the math, forty-six-acre property? You know? Um, it doesn't re, it doesn't restrict him from him or her from, from, from what they can build. And if he's hooking up to a sewer, then.
On those properties, you rarely see a sewer.
Yeah. And so on those properties, they would need to have a septic system that can handle.
They'd have to put in another one if they're, if it's going to be that far away.
If you have, if you have a three-bedroom house that has a three-bedroom septic system, you gotta do something anyway.
That's, that's true.
So I think that's kind of like, I, I think that's more making an argument than it is trying to
Right.
address the problem.
I know, I just.
I don't see that, anyway, I, I don't see that as a concern.
That's one of the things that came up at that meeting, was that, you know, they didn't take into account that people in cities can do this really easily because they have septic and they, or they have sewer and they have water and they have everything here. This is like a major investment to do it, because.
And I like going through those types of scenarios, thinking about it in that way, because some things you don't consider until somebody brings it up.
I mean, I, I think this, the intent here is, it's not that every single, um, parcel is going to necessarily make sense. Um, you know?
I think by and large, most people probably are not going to.
Yeah, it's expensive.
You know?
So.
I mean, I think going back to Eric's, uh, original point was, you know, what is the intent? Is the intent to keep somebody in their home? Or allow them the ability to stay in their home? I think that's, we can try to.
ADU, yes, but this stated purpose not.
Right, no. No, then it's a, a business opportunity.
Wasn't that more for out of the Cape though, wasn't it? I don't know, it just seems that all this, it's, they need more housing out there. We need housing here for families. They're out there for rentals, you know, and have an ADU, so, okay, I have an ADU, but who's going to know if they're renting it out to somebody? Subletting it or sub-renting it, so to speak. I don't see how you can monitor any of this.
Yeah, the, the whole enforcement of it, it's kind of.
Yeah. I mean, who's got a list of who's got an ADU and who has a short-term rental?
Ask that question, because is it being abused?
Yeah. Well, actually, there's wording in here that, uh, requires at the very end, data collection. You're going to love this, Wayne.
I saw it.
Did everyone see that?
Yep.
Who is, is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities in the administration of MGL, um, forty-eight, section three, paragraph eleven, municipalities shall keep a record of each ADU permit applied for, approved, denied, and issued a certificate of occupancy with information about the address, square footage, type, attached, detached, or eternal, internal. Eternal. Estimated value of construction, and whether the unit required any variances or a special permit. Municipalities shall make this record available to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities upon request.
Promise. Who wants that job?
Yes. Who, and then the municipality?
Volunteer opportunity.
That's right.
I felt like asking, I felt like asking at that meeting, are you gonna, are you gonna provide funding to towns to, you know? All right, so, um.
Thank you.
Draw a poll, who's ready to make a decision on number two, one or two ADUs per parcel? Um, yeah, sure. I'll start with Mer, Marie, do you have a comment?
No, I'm okay. I'm okay, whatever you guys decide.
You can come up, Anna, to the podium, please.
So the, the regulations state under number five, are, are special permits for multiple ADUs on the same lot? If a municipality chooses to allow additional ADUs, not just one or two, additional, on the same lot as a protected use, say, to you in a single-family residential zoning district, zoning shall require a special permit. I read that as suggesting that you would need to proactively allow multiple ADUs if that's what, if that's what you so choose. I completely agree with Kate that that's, kind of opens up a valley wick in most of the town. I might suggest, however, an overlay district that is centered around the Mass Pike corridor. You know, the one good thing about multiple tiny homes or small ADUs on a lot would be it would really help us attract some young people to a town, which is notoriously short on them. Um, because, you, you know, the economics of putting in, you know, three or four units along the Mass Pike, you know, somebody who gets their own house, doesn't care so much about the noise and frankly, it's not the kind of houses that are really in great deal of demand. And if you were to look at the roads that are on that corridor, that Mass Pike corridor, you know, within an eighth or quarter mile, I don't know what the distance is, you might think, consider like an overlay district around that corridor to, to, uh, you know, to see if there was any interest in multiple, you know, multiple ADUs on, in the corridor, in an overlay district, or in a, in a defined district. Um, I don't know if it would be an overlay, maybe use that term wrong. Um, but, you know, that's, I think, the only, I think that otherwise I would, I think we should see how bad it gets before we allow multiple ones, so.
Yeah, I think that, I think that just complicates it.
I agree, yeah.
Somebody voted for him.
Gary, you won? Okay.
Down for one.
I'm down for one.
I'm down for one. One, please.
We're all one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to make a motion on that. Um, I make a motion that he, um, changes to the zoning bylaw with regard to accessory dwelling units, allow one accessory dwelling unit per parcel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good.
Look how easy that one.
That was easy.
I'm the next.
All right. Number three. Um, condo-wise properties, is a property that becomes condos eligible for one ADU or one ADU per condo?
That would be nuts.
Can you imagine? That'd be a whole nother building.
Well, I know, I happen to know a condo right in the center of town that has nine units, and I cannot imagine squishing a whole bunch of them in the backyard.
Right. Well, you got to try.
Well, you do have the front too. Thank you.
You, you would probably know better.
Not much room for an ADU, but.
But and, and, and I'm really unsure of how co, condo communities are owned in this, in, in stock. But my, my understanding of a condo is that you don't own the, nobody owns the property except the association.
Right.
And that all you own
From the walls.
is a piece of the building.
You own from the walls in.
Or even if it's, even if it's a standalone building.
Yep.
You own, you own, you own the footprint, basically. Not even the footprint, you own the structure.
You just own your part.
Right. And so if you're not a property owner, then. then how do ADUs even come into them?
Well, the trustees are the property owners.
So the trust, so the trustee...
So they all own, essentially, I'll take, for example, a place that I know.
Yeah.
And it's based on square footage in terms of what their HOA fee, and, and that's how they maintain the property. They all own that.
HOA?
But it's one property, right? Association.
Oh, okay.
It's one property.
It's one property, yeah.
So there's, so there's one ADU.
Oh, yeah, that's what I, and I think that, too, because there's one building. It's not like there are plenty of buildings.
In some cases, there are multiple buildings.
How about, how about, you know?
Like White, White Pines.
White Pines.
Oh, God.
White Pines.
They don't have, they don't have the infrastructure.
So, you know, so we just need to
Right, you don't have land.
Decide.
They also don't have a septic system.
Are you with me here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
Well, I, I wanted to have you start again.
Okay, so we just need to decide, um, a property that becomes condo eligible for condos, are we allowing one ADU or one ADU per condo?
I'd say no.
Allow any?
Well, yeah, you know, that's, that, too, is that one of the things about condos is it's very private and they don't look at it as, like, they're short-term, they don't have, they don't allow short-term rent.
I don't even know. I'll check on that, right? You're, I'll check on whether you can do that.
I don't think we can say zero, oh.
Well, I don't know, I'll check, I'll check with Donna. Okay, I'm a one.
White Pines, are they condos? Because I thought that they were duplexes.
No, they're condos.
Condos, yeah.
Okay, so I'm a one, Eric's a one. Um, Liz? A one, Nancy?
Well, if it's a non, I'm a one.
Most of them don't even...
But if you can say non, I'd say no.
I'm gonna check on that, okay.
I'd like to say none, but like Wayne says, you really can't say...
As far as I, just my reading of that, I don't think it allows for you to say zero, but...
Well, Wayne, are you, so Nancy, you're a zero or one?
Yeah.
That just seems to flay in the face of the intent.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, I will check on the zero. So we've got two zeros and I would be a zero, too, if possible.
Yeah, we can.
So in the mean, I'll check on the zeros, get back to the zeros, and in the meantime,
I can't even imagine...
I'll make a motion
I don't either.
With regards to, um, condo eligibility, um, that we limit it to one ADU per prop...
So do they take away the special permit application that was originally force?
For one ADU per parcel, okay.
I wonder if they take away the special permit that, that, you know, called out ten units in a condo.
It just seems like a bureaucratic nightmare between the HOA and and I, I don't know how you even get that done.
Trustees would just vote on it.
I wonder if they're just, if they have to include these type of living spaces so that somebody's not discriminated against with the ability to do an ADU, do they have to include that? I don't know. Though I know.
Well, if we call it property owner, right, you have to own the property. And condo associations don't own the pr...
They do, the whole, they all own that property. It's all common ground, it's just not...
But it's, it's considered, the, the, the group is considered a one and the property is considered a one.
So is it just one? That's, you're gonna ask that question, right?
I'm gonna ask for the zeros. But in the meantime, I wanna get a vote.
Yeah.
Because if it's a no zero to the zeros, then we'll almost be done. Okay? All right, so, um, how about if, I'll make the motion again, but I forgot to do public input, so Marie, anything? I'm Patrick.
Just leave me alone.
No, the question.
Law doesn't define condos. But law only defines two things that are relevant to this conversation, lots and principal dwellings. Principal dwelling is a, is a, is a principal building on a lot that can have one or more units of housing in it, okay? So a lot is a physical lot, lot that is own, you know, that, that has contiguous borders. All right, so I think that i- if you're gonna make a motion this one, you might frame the motion around dwelling units and lots. Because, you know, there's, there, if you're not gonna allow multiple ADUs on a lot, you by definition aren't going to allow every prin, every, every, the principal dwelling, even if it has five units in it, to have five ADUs. I mean, those are kind of in the definitions, what, what are defined. Condos aren't defined, you know, and none of these other terms are defined, so...
And if there's five units, who owns an ADU? They each own a, an ADU? If they each can have an ADU, they each own their own ADU?
Well, yeah.
So this specific question, excuse me, this specific question from Donna is, is a property that becomes condos eligible for one ADU or one ADU per condo, and I suggest we stick to that, so...
A one, three.
Yeah. Are you, are you finished speaking, Patrick, or?
If, if, if it revolves around a principal residence, why do they call it out? I, I thought there was a place here that they called out condominium unit. You shall not restrict. Now, maybe I'm wrong, I thought I saw that.
One.
Shall not restrict. But I, I guess I'd have to look through, yeah.
I don't know if he asked the question, but lots and condominiums.
Thank you. All right, so back to the question. Um, I, I'm gonna make a motion that for a property that becomes condo, a property that becomes condos, it'd be eligible for one ADU. Do I have a second?
Wait, becomes condo or already has condos on it?
If a property becomes condos, it is eligible for one ADU.
That's...
Okay.
For a parcel. Forward, for a parcel as opposed to...
Right.
So it would be no matter how many condo units were there, it would allow for one?
One, right. So like White Pines? One condo.
That's, and that's, that's Donna's question, but to expand that, I think, uh, to, I think what Nancy was alluding to, existing condos, condo properties as well.
Yes, I think we need to include...
Well, that, that would be the, I think that would be the next question.
Okay, to the minutia of it, okay, so one. And they say, all right, we wanna do one. Does that get split up ten ways?
Yeah.
Because there's ten owners of the property?
No, it's one parcel, the parcel.
But, but no, he's just asking who owns it and the long one.
Would allow for one, but there's ten condos on the parcel.
And they sell it as a condo.
So, so then does it become a condo?
That's my question.
Is it an ADU or a condo?
Oh, yes.
So some of these things, some of these things, well, you know, I, I ran another question by Donna and she said, we don't know, some of this will have to play out.
Don't.
So, you know, again, I'm gonna go back to her question and just suggest that we, we start here.
Yeah.
And...
Well, in the, in the light of incrementality, I say that we try to be as restrictive.
Is that a word?
Yes.
No word.
It's a good word.
I just coined it.
Well, it's interesting, too, because, you know, now you have a con, an ADU on a condo property where everybody helps pay for that common area and they're saying, no, you can't do that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I mean, I, does that mean, you know, everybody gets to send one person to the ADU?
Right.
Well, their caretaker lives in the ADU. I like the idea of caretaker.
I don't know how you do with it.
Yeah.
That's why we're creating these, just for a person that might take care of that place.
That's right, exactly, exactly.
I think White Pines actually asked that.
So then everybody, so everybody in the condo, or the condo building...
Yeah, Doug used to live there.
Who did?
Doug.
Doug who?
Doug Weaver that was there forever and ever. He lived on property there.
Yeah.
It's, it's...
All right, so I'm gonna go back to that motion. Um, I make a motion that a property that becomes condos eligible for one ADU on the parcel, the entire parcel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Recommendations, right?
Yes.
Suggestions, yeah.
That's something that we wanna change.
Okay.
All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, we got it, and I will check on the, um, I will check on the, uh, the zeros and the ones on that second question, okay?
Yeah.
And just ask her, how, I mean, does it mean one, or does, does it truly mean one, or is it one for, you know?
It's one. Yeah, I'll double-check, yeah, it's just one. It's pretty sure, but I'll double-check.
Because I don't know what anything means, that much.
Okay.
Everything is parsed.
Well, you know, it's, it's, um, thank you all, because I know this is all stuff that we have to, to work through and it's, uh, there's a lot that we don't know, there are a lot of answers that we don't have, so...
Interesting conversation. I, I'm gonna be very curious to see what, how many people actually
Utilize.
Utilize. I don't think we're gonna see a lot, quite frankly, unless...
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
Who knows?
I mean, I know, I'm not interested in building an ADU.
It's expensive.
All right, so if there isn't any, oh, I know, so any agenda items for the next meeting?
Gary, we're gonna, uh, take another bite at the, uh,
Master plan? Yeah, I can put that down. Also, I don't know if you guys wanna talk about it at the next meeting, but I put us down, planning board budget. Everything is, like, some things have gone down a little bit, so some things like postage, I was able to bring that down a little bit. But I put in a new line item, which was stipends for planning board members to cover things like supplies, printing costs, that type of things, travel. Yeah, there you go.
On show.
Fifty dollars a month for birthday cakes. So, um, I can put that... I can put that, I can put that on the agenda for discussion if you want. And, you know, it's something that, you know, if you don't wanna have a stipend, you don't have to take a stipend. It's just, um, it's something that I put in on the budget. Do you guys want to discuss that at the next meeting, or you wanna discuss it?